Manhattan is a borough made up of diverse communities. Communities with different wants and different needs. And that's why it's up to you, the voter, to make that important educated decision about who will represent your district. Listen to the views from prospective candidates and incumbents and decide who gets your vote for the race to represent. Your source for multimedia coverage of Manhattan elections presented by Manhattan Neighborhood Network. Go to www.mnn.org.
The League of Women Voters of the City of New York and the Manhattan Neighborhood Network are pleased to bring you a debate between the candidates running for City Council, District 5. The winner in the general election on November 5th will take office in January 2014. Hi, I'm Rosemary Shields and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the City of New York. The candidates are seated in the order of their closing statements and will have several rounds of questions. We'll start with up to one-minute responses and 30-second rebuttals at my discretion. Starting from my left, let me introduce you to David Garland, the Republican and Independent Party candidate, and Ben Kalos, the Democratic and Working Families Party candidate. Welcome both of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So let's start. My first question I will direct to Mr. Garland. If you are elected to represent Council District 5, what will be your first order of business?
Thank you again. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and MNN for hosting us today and thank you for moderating, Rosemary. My first order of business begins and ends with the dump. I think that's the most imminent issue, referring to the Marine Transfer Station on 91st Street in the East River. It's a critical issue for our district on a safety, environmental, economic, political, on every level. This is a huge injustice that's being perpetrated on our district. I want to make sure that that is stopped and put an end to. So that's the first order of business. Now, the thing is, there's been a lot of effort to bring this to an end, but thus far it's been ineffective. And I think depending on who is elected in November, the game plan is going to change for that. But either way, you know, I have the strength and the experience to bring this to a close after many years of not getting much accomplished on this particular issue. So in response to your question, it's the dump.
Mr. Kalos.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and to the viewers watching this at home. This is all very important. My name's Benjamin Kalos. I'm the Democratic nominee for City Council and I've already been working with the community coalition to stop the dump ever since the primary. And I'm going to work with people who have already endorsed me for City Council, like Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, Councilwoman Jessica Lappin, and State Senator Liz Krueger to stop the dump. And in fact, I have a plan to stop it. We currently only recycle 15% of our waste, while major cities all over the country are up to 75%. So that's the plan. I'm working with the coalition to stop it. But on day one, it's about education, seats in schools. We're going to start trying to identify locations to put temporary schools as an innovative location. It's an idea that was modeled at Millennium High School and has been supported by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. I'll work with parents and community leaders to identify locations and make sure that every student has a seat in a school.
Thank you. Since you both brought up the transfer station and we have to have a solid waste transfer station in Manhattan, what would you recommend if we close that transfer station on East 91st Street?
Do I begin?
No, I'm, I'm, thank you. Mr. Kalos, what would be the alternative to that?
Sure. Not to sound too repetitive, but I oppose the dump. The 91st Street location is the only residential neighborhood that's getting a Marine Transfer Station. I'm also a member at Asphalt Green. I grew up on 88th and York and I remember the old dump, which was a lot smaller, and the garbage trucks would go by and they'd leak waste and there were rats and it just was not a great place to live. And I'll do anything I can to stop it. The new site is going to have a 10-story facility, which is going to have a lot more garbage than we ever saw before. And so what I've proposed is moving from 15% recycling to 75% recycling. Manhattan already has a recycling Marine Transfer Station and with this idea, we are moving away from Marine Transfer to landfill towards a greener city.
Mr. Garland.
Yes, thank you. So I agree that Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, Jessica Lappin, current council member, they've made great efforts in trying to stop this, but the fact is thus far they've been ineffective constructions moving forward. I'm not a career politician. I'm somebody who gets things done in business and government. And I want to put a stop to this once and for all. This has been dragging on for a decade. The fact is that whoever wins the mayoral race will make a final decision as to whether this moves forward or not. Joe Lodez reiterated time and again that he won't build this transfer, this transfer station. Bill de Blasio recently reiterated that he would. Now, I have a background of working with both parties. I'm very much a centrist and a nonpartisan. To me, it doesn't matter who wins the race. I want to make sure that they understand the ramifications of this and they're not good. This is, as Ben mentioned, this is the densest residential area in the United States. This does not belong in a residential area and I would make sure that there's never a transfer station built in a residential neighborhood, in any borough. We take care of our trash now by shipping it to New Jersey at a third of the cost it would cost to build this transfer station and transfer it by Marine Transfer. So I would continue that effort. It's trucking directly out to New Jersey where it ends up anyway.
Thank you. I'll direct this to Mr. Garland. Do you support the zoning change to increase the size, height, and bulk of commercial and residential buildings in Midtown?
Rosemary, I love this city and one of the things about New York is that it's constantly changing. That's not going to end anytime in the future. That's what makes a city great. I do believe that in order to balance, New York is unique in that it's a combination of a residential city and a corporate commercial city combined in one densely populated area. We need to make sure that our needs for both are balanced. The biggest complaint, and I've been out in the street every day for the past six months talking to people, their concern is that residents are not getting a voice in the changes that are taking place right now. And the Bloomberg administration is trying to push through some, some final projects, massive rezoning and rebuilding projects, that they're not getting a voice and they're not having a say in that matters. I think that's the biggest concern. We need to make sure that both sides, the commercial interests and the residential interests are balanced. And there are ways to do that. We can build schools through these new development projects. We can get affordable housing through them. There are ways to benefit both sides of the equation. That's what we need to focus on.
Mr. Kalos.
I stand with a coalition of strong Democrats from all over New York City and council member Dan Grotnick, who are opposing the current plan for the Midtown rezoning. It's rushed. These decisions are going to have effect on our city for generations to come. And the current short couple of month windows to make decisions that are going to have such a huge impact do not give the community a strong enough voice in the process. I look forward to working with other council members and leaders to delay the process and make sure that we give the community ample time to consider it. Make sure that any new development supports local infrastructure, transportation, schools, services for constituents, and move forward as part of a city where all of us can afford to live.
Thank you. I'll start with Mr. Kalos. Marial control of the schools may be modified. What changes of any would you like to see in public education?
Education, as I already explained, is one of my top priorities. I went to public school. I went to high school, public high school, public university, and public law school. So I can do a little bit more there because I actually lived it. I want everyone to have the same world-class education as I had at the Bronx High School of Science. One idea, which was endorsed by the New York Times when they endorsed me in the Democratic primary, was increasing access to higher education with loan forgiveness for students, Kuni graduates who stay. Another idea, as we've already spoken about, is identifying vacant space, commercial space, converting that into schools. And with regard to marital control, we need to make sure that parents, teachers, and students all have a greater voice in the process because everybody deserves an amazing education.
Okay. Mr. Garland.
Yes, thank you. I also make education very high priority and I would in as a future councilman. The, the fact is there aren't enough classrooms. More and more families have decided to stay in New York raising their children here. And we've seen a bulge of new students come through the system and there haven't been enough seats in classrooms. We need to address that issue immediately. My proposal, Expanding Classrooms/Expanding Minds Plan, would provide an opportunity to do that. I don't think that commercial space is the way to go. I think there are facilities throughout the district, such as churches, synagogues, and other facilities that already have classrooms, cafeterias, gymnasium facilities for gym classes. They're already set up. They're perfect opportunities to use these facilities. They're empty throughout the week. We could share that space as an interim solution. The long-term solution is to build new classrooms, as I mentioned before, through our rezoning and building plans. We need to make sure that that's addressed in future construction. I also believe that, you know, anything I say that regards education, it begins and ends with the students. That's my top priority. What is best for their education? And I believe that charter schools is addressing a need in terms of fulfilling the need for students to get a better education. So I would support charter schools as well.
Okay, and a follow-up, a 30-second follow-up on that. Do you have a position on putting charter schools in the same buildings with traditional public schools? 30 seconds.
Okay, the colocation issue is a tricky one. It's, and in my involvement in community board meetings, I've seen how it's created friction. I do believe that charter schools serve a useful purpose, again, because it improves the educational opportunities of our children. That said, we don't want them competing for facilities with public schools. Public schools also serve a great, they're fantastic in our city, in our district in particular. So let's make sure that they're working together. I think colocation makes it difficult to do that and it creates a bit of healthy competition with charter schools and public schools. So let's continue with that.
Mr. Kalos.
I'm a member of Community Board Eight. When I joined Community Board Eight, I actually helped found the Youth and Education Committee, where we've been tackling tough issues like colocation. Charter schools being placed in a public school building must pay the same amount as that public school is paying for its students. So if they're getting the space for free, that's not exactly fair. Additionally, when a charter school gets an improvement, it's also supposed to happen at the public school, but that hasn't been happening either. So what I'd like to do as the next council member from the East Side would be to enforce the rules for charter schools and make sure that everyone has equal access to a quality education.
Okay, thank you. The next question to Mr. Kalos. There is a shortage of affordable housing. What ideas do you have to provide more housing and ensure that the New York City Housing Authority makes the needed repair on its thousands of units?
Affordable housing is a huge problem. Anyone watching knows how hard it is to find a nice apartment to live in in New York City, let alone one on the Upper East Side. It's next to near impossible. One of the ideas, for which the New York Times endorsed me in the Democratic primary, was reforming 421A, which provides tax benefits to developers who include affordable housing. And I'd like to make sure that there's more affordable housing on-site and that any new development includes affordable housing components. Additionally, I want to make sure that all of the affordable housing opportunities are available in a central location to eliminate red tape because if I do this right, everyone will be able to afford on the, afford to live on the East Side, including me.
Mr. Garland.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a large, a very big issue. I hear this a lot, probably the most common concern on the streets from constituents. There are a number of things that we need to do. First of all, the 421A plan, tax abatement plan, needs to be continued and expanded. Also, we need to find a replacement for Mitchell Lama. Mitchell Lama is coming up for expiration in the next few years. We need to make sure that we have a new plan that will carry us forward for the next 30 years going forward because we have more and more people coming into the city. We need to make sure that they can find housing. And it's not just the new people coming in. It's also seniors who have been in their homes for a number of years and are being forced out because of rent increases. We need to make sure that we provide an alternative for them, an opportunity for them to stay in their homes. So expanding 421A, finding a new plan to go forward for Mitchell Lama. And then also, we need to make sure that not just building affordable housing, but the infrastructure can carry it. Everybody knows the Upper East Side is way over congested as it is. So Second Avenue Subway will be a welcome addition, but we need to make sure that we go even further in terms of building infrastructure to support new housing.
So I will start with you, Mr. Garland. There may be a change in the stop and frisk policy. What else would you do to make our streets and neighborhoods safer?
Thank you. Yeah, stop and frisk, I think over the past 20 years, anybody who's been here through that time, and I've been here over a decade now, there's been a precipitous decline in crime throughout the city. Stop and frisk has been a useful tool in that. We need to make sure that, I believe we need to make sure that that continues. Now, any perception that there's a, an abuse of power by the police, we need to make sure that that stops and that stops immediately. So I would encourage, I would definitely want to have an inspector general who would be independent of the police force, who could investigate any abuses. That said, New York's one of the safest cities in the world and we need to continue that, that legacy. In terms of other ways of fighting crime, I think one of the big issues right now is there's a lot of concern right now with the new bike lanes, that they're not, traffic laws are not being followed by cyclists. That, I think those need to be prosecuted. Part of it's education, part of it's prosecution, but that's another area that's a common concern in my district in terms of violating the law.
Anytime a federal judge finds that our policing practices like stop and frisk are violating civil rights is a problem. It's an unsustainable model for the police to be stopping our friends and neighbors just on the basis of the color of their skin. It's not right. It's not fair. I'm joining the Progressive Caucus in the City Council should I be elected. We've come out in favor of the inspector general and passed a lot of the other reforms that will help make our streets safer. But I grew up here and I remember some of the other models that worked. And on Second Avenue, along the construction, there's been more crime. And one of the solutions that we've proposed is to take funds from the MTA Capital Construction Budget to pay for BEET COPs so that we can return to the BEET COP community policing model that has worked and we know will work to keep our neighborhood safer.
Thank you. I'm going to have a follow-up, a 30-second follow-up. I will start with you, Mr. Kalos. What else can we do to avoid having more of our children killed by guns in their own homes and neighborhoods?
Anytime we're speaking of children, we need to focus on education and making sure that we're taking care of kids, keeping them off the street where they can get in trouble. I grew up here. There aren't many safe spaces for children after school. School gets out at 3:00, parents don't get home till 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 or later. We're all working longer hours. One of our proposals is wraparound schools to provide after-school activities to keep kids off the street, out of juvenile hall, and it pays for itself because juvenile hall costs about $10,000 a month. And that's money that instead of paying for the schools-to-prison pipeline, we could actually be taking care of our kids and investing in their future.
Mr. Garland.
Just to respond to your question, I believe that, I'm a proponent of gun control here in New York City. I believe that we should keep guns out of the hands of those who shouldn't have them. And in terms of accidental injuries or even fatalities, I think that we need to continue to support, you know, gun control laws here in the city and make sure that they're not getting into the wrong hands. And keeping them out of the homes prevents those kind of accidents from happening.
Thank you. I'll start with you on this question. With fewer federal funds and the expense of the government shutdown, how can we repair our aging infrastructure, especially our bridges and tunnels?
Yeah, this is a huge question for not just the short term, but the long-term future of New York City. We have an infrastructure that's quite old. I've lived in a lot of cities around the world and they have fantastic new systems, infrastructure systems that I'd like, we should try to emulate here going forward because New York is a city for the future as well. So how are we going to do that? What's, how are we going to deal with the cost? For example, the Second Avenue Subway costs $6 billion to build and that's not a long-term plan for the future infrastructure of our city. That only takes us right now from 96th Street to 63rd Street. It's not going to be enough to handle the future burdens on our infrastructure. So I believe there has to be, and this is why the unique character of New York City, where it's a, it's a commercial center, but also a residential center in one, affords us tremendous opportunities to combine the strengths of both in order to build new infrastructure. So new construction projects, I think there should be a portion of those budgets that go directly toward infrastructure strengthening and future building. For example, Memorial Sloan-Kettering, Cornell Wild Tech Center on Roosevelt Island, part of their budget needs to be to reinforce their infrastructures.
Mr. Kalos.
It's great to talk about ideas, but I think what voters need to pay attention to is action. When Cornell New York City Tech was planning to build on Roosevelt Island, I worked with a coalition of community groups, the Roosevelt Island Residents Association, the Roosevelt Island Community Coalition, on putting together joint testimony with a list of things that we needed as a community from Cornell to support local infrastructure. And I was the only one in this race to testify and we won as a community. We got concessions, about eight pages worth of them. And now Cornell New York City Tech will actually be supporting local infrastructure. And I think that's a model of what we can do as a community with the right council member to make sure that all new development supports local infrastructure. On Roosevelt Island, we're going to be seeing a ferry brought there because it's really hard to get off and on and off the island. Together, we can build a better city where new development supports local infrastructure.
Okay. Mr. Kalos, I'll start with you on this question. Currently, the law allows the city sewage treatment plants to accept waste from hydrofracking operations elsewhere. Such waste is toxic and hazardous and our sewage treatment plants are not equipped to handle this chemical waste. As several New York counties have fracking waste legislation protecting their water supplies, the question is, would you introduce and support legislation giving New York City the same protection?
Absolutely. I will do anything I can to protect New York City's water supply. I love New York City water. I drink glasses and glasses of it every day and it's the best water on the planet and it should stay that way. In fact, as part of my City Council campaign, rather than just focus on how many voters can we get, we've actually held community events in our office. We converted it into a movie theater. We did a screening of Gasland Part II to educate people in the district about the dangers of hydrofracking. I will continue to do so, build community support around it, organize, and support legislation to make sure that hydrofracking does not make its way to New York City. Every New Yorker deserves to be able to drink water from the faucet and have the best tasting water in the world.
Mr. Garland.
Yeah, thank you. As with any issue, there are two sides to this equation. So this, these new advances in technology that allow for hydrofracking have basically, we're going to revolutionize the energy industry. And we have the opportunity here to enable America to be energy independent as the Obama administration has outlined, the Department of Energy. And this could be a game-changing development. Now that said, there's also environmental concerns and we don't know the full impact yet of how hydrofracking affects the infrastructure. For New York City and an area, particularly the East Coast, it's so densely populated and we, we get a lot of our water from further upstate and it is fantastic water, no question about that. We need to make sure it's protected. So when it's out in North Dakota, hydrofracking has totally revolutionized that economy and it made a huge boom for the energy industry out there in the economy in North Dakota. That's fine. It's very sparsely populated, but the, the way to address it out there is very different from how we would address it here in New York City. And so I'm, I'm for a moratorium on hydrofracking in New York State.
Okay, thank you. The city conducted an expensive runoff primary election for the public advocate. Do you support the legislation for instant runoff voting for the three citywide offices? And I'll start with you, Mr. Garland.
Yes, I do, I do support that. I think anything that simplifies the voting process is, is good. It's a positive development. It is expensive. Running elections is expensive and having runoffs is also very expensive. And the voter turnout is usually very low for these types of races. So let's have an opportunity to either grade potential candidates, to number them, you know, from top to bottom, so that we avoid going through this expensive process again weeks later. You know, a lot of people don't have the opportunity to vote. And I think essentially you're, you're achieving the same end by doing it all at the same time. So I would actually very much support that process. Yep.
Mr. Kalos.
I was proud to receive the preference of Citizens Union in the Democratic primary and they are one of the major community organizations behind instant runoff voting, which I fully support. We spent more on an election for public advocate than the office actually has for a budget, by something like eight times more. With instant runoff voting, voters are able to prioritize their picks and in a sense, even if you don't get your first choice, you're likely to get your second choice. And in that case, everyone's invested in all the candidates and everyone wins versus the current system of zero sum, either my candidate wins or doesn't. It also means that candidates have to appeal to more voters instead of just writing certain voters off. In this case, instant runoff voting will save us money. It will also mean that voters are more engaged and it means that candidates will have to listen to more voters like you.
Thank you. This has been a lively discussion and we're almost out of our time. So what I'm going to do is just ask you one 30-second question. Do you have a pet peeve about the city? What is it?
I would say my pet peeve is a lot of what we've talked about here today in that over the past few years, it's been this sense of disenfranchisement, marginalization by the people in my district. There's a sense, you hear this in community board meetings, you hear this block association meetings, that their voices are not being heard, not just heard, but also counted and taken, put in the equation when major decisions are being made for their district and for the city. As city councilman, I would make sure that not just through discretionary spending, but in being, having a very open office, that we'd make sure that their voices are heard and counted and actually have an impact on the decisions being made in their neighborhoods and in the city.
Mr. Kalos.
I think my pet peeve, having grown up here, is the fact that they want to turn the Marine Transfer Station back on and put it here. They're not listening to the communities, they're not listening to experts, they're not listening to anyone and they just want to put it right there. Anytime the administration refuses to listen to the elected officials, community coalitions, the community board, or anyone else, we have a problem. Part of why I won the Democratic primary is because of how open and participatory my campaign has been. I look forward to working with the community to fight the Marine Transfer Station and other problems in our district.
Okay, so it is now time for closing statements, so we'll start with Mr. Garland.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for hosting, moderating today, and League of Women Voters, MNN, for having us. It's been a great discussion. I am not a career politician. I've built my career over the past 20 years, making major changes in government and business. From AIG, when it was on the precipice of bankruptcy, to bringing it to a profitable company today, to working during the Asian Financial Crisis, when the airline industry was going under and helping them have a rebirth during the 90s. So I'm all about big change. I am not a career politician and I bring fresh ideas and the ability to execute, not just talk about ideas, not just present lawsuits or try to force, bring them to court, but actually making sure the steps are taken to get things done. So I want to represent this district because I do feel that over the past decade at least, there's been a market decline in quality of life. You know, we talked first about the dump, we talked about Second Avenue Subway, we talked about crime, we talked about schools. I mean, at some point, our elected officials need to take responsibility. Are you better off than you were four years ago or even eight years ago? I don't know about you, but for me, in my district, I would absolutely have to say no. And I'm hearing over and over again on the streets that they feel the same way. They don't know what's going on, why it is that these things are cropping up overnight and they're having no impact, no voice in making those decisions. So I want to make sure that our district is fully represented and that the things that we're talking about now, the things that we've outlined that need to get done in our district are being done. And I want to make sure that, that that's transparent, that process is transparent and that people are fully engaged in that process from beginning to end.
Thank you. Mr. Kalos.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, Manhattan Neighborhood Network, and again to viewers like you who are watching in hopes of making a better decision on Election Day. My name's Ben Kalos. I was proud to win the primary to be your Democratic candidate for City Council. This is the neighborhood where my grandparents fled to escape antisemitism in Europe and where my mother raised me and still lives. I've been an entrepreneur, attorney, policy director for former public advocate Mark Green, chief of staff to Assembly Member Jonathan Bing, and even chief of staff to Assembly Member Jonathan Bing, and even ran a good government group. I've made my name removing corrupt politicians from Albany and putting their voting records online, so voters like you could hold them accountable. In the City Council, I will fight to make sure that every child has the same quality, world-class education that I received at the Bronx High School of Science. I'll protect affordable housing and services for seniors like my mother, so that they can, they and their caretakers can live healthy and independently. I'll improve quality of life along the Second Avenue subway construction, and I will oppose the marine transfer station. To learn more or share your own solutions, where we already have 100 online at benkalos.com, or you can call me at 212-960-3440, because together, we can build a better city.
I want to thank the candidates for participating in today's debate. For more information about voting, the candidates, your poll site, and the six ballot issues, contact the League of Women Voters at l w v n y c dot org, vote411.org, and our telephone Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, and the polls are open 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Get out and vote.